Okay, so at this time, call to order the May 5th, 2020 Goochlin County Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, the Board of Supervisors meeting will be held using electronic means in compliance with Goochlin County's continuity of government ordinance, section one. And Ms. Biskayewitz has shown on the screen the call-in number, how you can join us by Zoom. You can join by mobile dial-in. There are several numbers and showing you the meeting ID. And dial-in users who wish to speak can raise their hand by pressing nine on their cellphone.
Star nine.
Star nine. There we go. Okay. So the first order of business is the invocation. Supervisor Spoonhow, if you would lead us in prayer, please.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this springtime weather that we've received, God. We just invite you here to this meeting today, Lord. In these times of uncertainty, we are humbled that you would call us to serve the people of Goochlin. Give us the wisdom that we need to make the decisions that are in front of us tonight. Lord, we just pray for your protection over all the essential workers, God, and just help us to get through this. And we thank you for being here. We thank you for your son. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. So the first item of business is the chair comments. Do have a few comments on the COVID pandemic. I'd like to thank our citizens, all of our staff, our public safety personnel, school division, all of our local businesses and nonprofits for doing your part in keeping Goochlin County safe. We even had a new restaurant open in the courthouse area during this time, and that's not an effort in optimism and resilience. I don't know what is. So what we're doing is working. You know, current infections in Goochlin County are only about three-tenths of 1%. And that does include the offenders at the Virginia Correctional Center for Women. So we're looking forward to the reopening of the state and the county as soon as possible by balancing safety and a return to some kind of normalcy. Please continue to support our staff and our local businesses and nonprofits. On other news, Goochlin County Public Schools has just announced that the high school class of 2020 will graduate at Goochlin Drive-In Theater on June 16th at 8:30 PM. So that's, I know they're really excited to have that opportunity. The Board of Supervisors is executing, I couldn't read my word there, is executing a plan to find a new county administrator. We have contracted with an executive search firm, Baker Tilly. They are located actually in St. Paul, Minnesota, but they do have staff here in Mechanicsville. So we are also designing an online survey for staff, constitutional officers, and our residents to get your feedback on what you'd like to see in the new county administrator. And I think you know us well enough by now, we really do want that feedback from everyone. That's going to be really valuable to us. As soon as it's available, we will release it to you. That's all I have. Mr. Podolsky, county administrator comments?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Obviously, and I appreciate the comments as it related to COVID, we have a further update today on some of the additional actions that we were undertaking on behalf of our COVID response. Sheriff Creasy is here with us. Chief Ferguson just had to duck out. There's a structure fire that he is responding to on River Road. So I'm going to stall briefly with a few other updates and then come back to that and let him join if it's possible. If not, he's where he needs to be right now. So just wanted to remind folks a couple things. Tomorrow in the courthouse area, the Goochlin YMCA is holding a community food drive from 8:00 to noon. This will benefit Goochlin Cares and other local food pantries at Mount Gilead Baptist Church, St. Matthew's Methodist Church, and Victory Christian Fellowship. Non-perishable foods, no glass, and toiletries are suggested. So if you have been hoarding toilet paper, this is a time to give to others in need. Wanted to remind everybody, I think there may be a little bit of confusion, but as it relates to the census, this is the time that the census is actively taking their actions to get information from residents in our community. April 1 was Census Day, but they're still taking online submissions for census response. You can still go online. It takes about five to 10 minutes, honestly, depending on how much information you need to add in online. You can also do it by phone. There's paper questionnaires that will be sent. I am proud of Goochlin. As always, we represent very well. Currently, our self-response rate is about 63.3% compared to about 61.5% for Virginia. We're a little bit ahead of the curve, but there's still a lot of folks that could participate. As you may have seen, some of the PSAs that we've been doing lately trying to get some folks to participate. What happens is, is if you don't take these opportunities through phone or email or online to respond, that's when the census takers come a-knocking later in the process and try to gain additional response before the census is closed out. This is an important process for us as it guides a lot of the federal funding. It guides data management for the next 10 years for us. And so encourage our residents to continue to participate in the census. Also, I think folks may be very aware, in June, we have a Republican primary for U.S. Senate. That is now on June 23rd. It's two weeks later than originally, based on a governor's directive. That's June 23rd. There will not be a Democratic primary occurring. As always, we would consider encouraging individuals to vote absentee by mail if they would so choose. Obviously, COVID-19 is making the election process a little bit more interesting than normal. And I do want to share with you, in my conversations with the Board of Election and Register, they're doing everything to make sure that they can provide a safe and secure of an election process for our residents as possible. And I do know that they would welcome additional input and help. Obviously, a lot of the folks that support our elections are seasoned veterans, if you will, and they could use potentially some more support. And if you have any additional questions, encourage folks to contact the General Register at 804-556-5803. But I know they're preparing well and on top of that June election. I will shift now to COVID-19 response. I did want to share, I've had the pleasure, honestly, not that any of us wanted to be in a response mode to such a pandemic that's impacted our community in many difficult and trying ways, but I have been proud to be part of the team with Dr. Rayly, with our sheriff, Sheriff Creasy, and with our Fire and Rescue Chief, Chief Ferguson, amongst many others throughout our organization, throughout organizations in our community that are responding to our residents' needs. It is heartening to see people step up and take care of those in our community. As you recall, we issued our emergency declaration back on March 13th. And it's been trying for our businesses in our community. Unemployment, just a little bit of perspective, we went from three people in Goochlin County on unemployment prior to COVID-19. Most recent numbers was just over 600 people on unemployment in Goochlin County alone. Percentage-wise, we are still a little bit lower than some of the other jurisdictions. I've heard some anticipating unemployment numbers north of 10%, 15% even, as things go along here a little bit earlier. Goochlin is a little better positioned than some of the other jurisdictions. That being said, there are a lot of folks that are really pressured right now due to closures of businesses and job losses, and we've been sensitive to that. We've taken a number of actions to try to support, you know, extending penalties and interest on tax payments, not turning off utilities and those kinds of things, amongst another, a number of other initiatives to try to support our small business community. But we do know that folks are struggling. In response to that, we've done a number of things. There is a regional incident management team that our staff has been actively participants in. That has resulted in additional PPE for our public safety providers, actually additional PPE that we're able to share amongst departments even at this point. We are not seeing a shortage right now, and so we are stocked from a PPE front. Some of the actions that we've taken have helped stop the surge that they were worried about on hospitals, bed utilization. And so some of the actions we've taken as a region and potentially as a Commonwealth have impacted potentially what could have been even worse. But then the question starts to become, what's next? Or what, how do we proceed as we go forward? I think many in our community and us as a staff have been eagerly watching the governor's press conferences every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to try to get some different direction from where the governor stands. He shared a phasing approach just yesterday, and we saw some additional guidance, or late this afternoon, late this morning, I'm sorry, on what may be a rephasing of reopenings, if you will, for small businesses. Phase one is still limited. It still has a 10-person cap, but is suggesting that barbers and restaurants can open in an expanded capacity over what's there today. It also references fitness centers and some other kinds of businesses. Phase two, which, phase, he was somewhat vague. It's two to four weeks, but on average, three, that he anticipates each phase going. Phase two is a little bit more liberal than phase one. It goes to up to 50 individuals in group gatherings. And again, anticipating two to four week on average for phase two. This is all contingent upon certain metrics that they're using at the state level to die down. Now, I know originally, they said they were looking at testing numbers as one of those metrics. I will say, yesterday was the first time I really, on top of what the governor is sharing, and we use that as guidance, we internally are working to roll out some phasing plans of our own of how we could reopen to our public and do it safely for our employees. We anticipate, while the governor's guidance and the state health offices and CDC is our direct guidance, that we will have plans that will be similar but different, that meets Goochlin's needs a little more specifically. I'm hoping, finished a draft that I forwarded out internally today, hoping by the end of this week, we have a little more guidance that will be consistent with the governor's saying he anticipates opening certain things up next Friday. Assuming things don't take a step back, I see us starting to phase different kinds of opportunities for additional engagement with our residents as soon as the end of next week, the first of the following week. And so we will be doing that internally. I have also asked Sheriff Creasy to expand. The Sheriff's Department has been doing some great work on behalf of our community. And then if Chief Ferguson does not get back, I will add a few more things on behalf of Fire and Rescue, and then that'll be all that I will have, Madam Chairman. So if you're comfortable, ask Sheriff Creasy to come up and add.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Podolsky. Sheriff, thanks for coming today.
Madam Chair, Board, Mr. Podolsky, I would like to start off first with thanking each and every one of you for the hard work that you all have put into the budget process. And Mr. Podolsky and Barbara as well. I really do, I thank you for the deputies, for the dispatchers, for all of our staff that we have at the Sheriff's Office. We truly thank you for what you've done. I know it was hard, a lot of hard decisions, but we truly do appreciate it. A few things, just what's going on at the Sheriff's Office due to COVID-19, a few changes that we have made. One is our shift operations, our roll calls. We actually do that out in the field quite a bit, which is actually a benefit, in my opinion, for that. We do a lot of Zoom or conference calls. For everyone, when they mark on duty, they're actually in certain areas, so do out the counting. So we're doing that all by conference calls, Zooms, and the supervisors actually meet up and do face-to-faces with the deputies out in the field. Also, as you know, our court schedules, that's sort of in flux right now, but we are preparing and trying to gauge what courts is going to be like when they do fully open up. We're anticipating a lot of court dates and a lot of extra people working when it does open up. Also, as Mr. Podolsky spoke, the women's farm, and that's a topic for us for paper service. We go to the women's farm almost daily to serve papers. Any subpoenas, summonses, garnishments, we serve them on inmates, we serve them on staff. As of right now, since that is a hotspot, if you will, we have limited that to serving those papers just once every two weeks unless we have a paper that is time-restricted, that has to get in there as soon as possible and get served. When our deputies go in there, they're full PPE when they go in there. The warden has been very gracious and very willing to work with us. We don't go inside the building. They actually moved their guard shack, if you've driven by there. They actually moved their shack closer to Route 6, and that's where, that's as far as we go. So they've been very accommodating for that. We've also put in a bunch of different procedures for PPE and wearing them with their interactions to the public. We're trying to get the public to, if they're in a home, and they're able, to come outside, come outside into open air, keep them at social distance, and interview them or whatever they may need to do. And unfortunately, just like the county administration building, the buildings at the Sheriff's Office are closed to the public with the exception of the magistrate's office and the main lobby. If they need something, we come out and we assist them. We have been working and communicating with many agencies, as in Dr. Frank with the Health Department. I think I have his phone number on speed dial when we do have one of our guys or gals that does have a possible exposure, and he has been, he is outstanding to work with. So if he was here, I would thank Dr. Frank for his advice. Also, working with the other agencies, you know, we were in the Uniform Command meetings once a day there for a while, and also, you know, conference meeting with sheriffs, chiefs across the state, even across the nation. And we've been working very close with some of our, the seven counties that actually border us, sharing information on where we can get PPE or different trends that they're going through. Few things that we're monitoring is, one, in times like these, it's opportunities for element of different crimes, you know, crimes of opportunity, you know, crimes of desperation. It does happen, but we are monitoring that, and we're doing extra patrol in, you know, construction sites, you know, everywhere in the county, we're just extra patrol all the way around, checking businesses just so those crimes, you know, hopefully are prevented. We're also, when it comes to domestics arguments, I know we're hearing in the news that there's a lot of domestics arguments, fights that are increasing. And knock on wood, you know, we have not seen that. It's, we're about normal in Goochlin, which is great. But we do expect an increase if we don't open up, you know, the state pretty soon. We definitely are expecting an increase. And we've had, we've seen a traffic increase over the past couple of weeks. Looked like people are getting out, getting their fresh air, and getting out, but we have noticed that as well. We're also keeping track of our employees, making sure that their physical and mental health are well. Supervisors from, myself down, we're calling the guys, you know, guys and gals, just double checking with them, making sure that they're okay. Then also, we started a new program, the prescription delivery. We've delivered 122, I'm pretty sure, as of today, prescriptions, which I think is pretty outstanding to the most vulnerable here in Goochlin.
That's cool.
And I would like to thank the community. We have been flooded with food, pizza, subs, PPE. We've had people making masks for us, donating masks. It's truly why I love Goochlin. The community is so supportive. It is one outstanding thing. But that is it. That's a real quick brief on some of the changes we've done and what we're doing. And if y'all would permit, I'd like to introduce one of our new hires.
Sure.
First, this is Arla Newton. And Arla joined Goochlin Sheriff's Office as a crime analyst in March, I believe it was March 26th to be exact, with a background both in law enforcement and military intelligence. She was a member of Charlottesville Police Department for six years, both as a police officer and a community service officer. Prior to that, she served eight years in the military as a human intelligence collector. She is married with a one-and-a-half-year-old son, and she hopes to gain valuable knowledge and experience in her new role that will allow her to continue to serve her community in many ways. And I say "her" community because she recently moved to Goochlin County. So I just want to introduce you to Arla. She's been a blessing to us so far, and thank you for joining the team, Arla.
Yeah, welcome.
And if you have any questions, I'll plan to answer them.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Any questions?
Just a real quick one. Sheriff, have you seen any, you mentioned you didn't see any measurable or dramatic increase in domestic disputes or violence. How about substance abuse, opioids, alcohol? Have you seen any spike in that at all either?
No, we haven't. We haven't. And some of our domestic fights, arguments, we have, a lot of them are due to alcohol, they're alcohol-fueled, but nothing abnormal. It's about the normal.
Good. Glad to hear that.
We have seen a little bit of an increase in psychat, or psych behavior. You know, we've seen a lot of that.
Sure, understand. Great. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for what you're doing.
All right. Y'all be safe.
Keep it up. Yeah, appreciate it.
Madam Chairman, just a few more items that I want to share.
Absolutely.
Ironically, while Chief had to duck out because he's responding to a structure fire, one of the pieces of information he wanted to remind everybody tonight is about fire prevention. The more folks are staying home, the more likely that there could be an activity. I think he had shared in the past that he had seen some activities from porches and those kinds of things, but he definitely wants people to be vigilant. Fire department remains steady, fast to assist with smoke detector installation, those kinds of things. But he has seen an uptick in some of the calls for home fires. There's, as people are doing cleanups on their properties, there's been burnings that they've had to respond to and other issues that have given them a little bit of an uptick where, you know, they may not have as many vehicular responses to do, but they're actually seeing an uptick in some of their fire response. And so they do believe that that's contributed to more folks being home and different issues happening while homes are even more occupied. But Chief, it's ironies of ironies where he is right now, but he's where he needs to be right now with his team. In addition to, and I wanted to also give a little bit of a plug for Deputy Chief Mike Watkins. You know that he just joined us right before COVID-19, and he's really been a leader for us in the region in stepping up with the All-Hazard Incident Management Team, and he in chief. The community and the board should be proud of the efforts that they're doing on our behalf. And so they've been very solid representatives for us and have helped position us not only to be a recipient of some of the PPE that's been ordered on large procurements, but there are programs, and you may or may not be aware of this, but some, even the feeding program that's happening through the schools, some of that's done through grants that they've been able to receive from information that they're getting out of some of the funds that have been established in the region. You may be aware that the, I guess it's called Plan RVA now, is a conduit through the community foundations, and there's been some funds distributed throughout the region. Goochlin County actually received about $95,000. Percentage-wise, it's pretty high compared to other jurisdictions on some of those funds. And some of that's because we're actively advocating for our needs and issues. Also, the team at Fire and Rescue, along with our finance department, you'll hear a little bit more from Barbara about some funds that we were able to recover as it relates to COVID-19 response, but they're also the ones that are helping us all as an organization track the day-to-day hours that we're putting in on COVID response, all the purchases that we're putting in on COVID response. So we're prepared, as soon as there's any process in addition established, for us to recover some of those funds, we're ready to go. And so, but you'll hear from Barbara a little bit more about some of the funds that are being directly deposited back to us, but we are prepared for those efforts, and they've taken a great leadership role in that. Finally, I just wanted to share, the Virginia Department of Social Services, for those that have phones and apps, they've developed, for both Apple and Android users, an app for social services support. It's, you can access it through the state website at www.covid.virginia.gov. And for those that choose to go to the county's website, we continue to put information out at www.virginia.gov/coronavirus, trying to get people the right information. I think one of the challenges that we've had in this is, do we stand up separate countywide websites just for COVID when we're referring directly back to some of the state data? We're not, and this is one of the questions that we get fairly regularly. Help me appreciate the data, the number that I'm seeing come from the state. The county is not the counters of that data. We're the recipients of the state's collection of that data. And so sometimes, I will say that I've gotten some frustrated calls from residents of, you know, it seems like these numbers changed from two days of reporting. Some of that's because they've changed the formats that they were doing reporting. You know, at one point, they were counting collective number of tests, and that changed down to the individuals and not, and so I, the calls that I've had have been the best we can, and we get them directed to the right people at the state to help them with some of their concerns. But, you know, at this point, I will say, we, probably the past several weeks, we've been sort of maintaining our operational plans, but it's really allowing us now to catch our breath and start looking forward. When we do reopen, we will have additional measures in place. We will, we're working on queuing for certain offices, especially those that get large numbers of people, the commissioner and the treasurer, potentially community development, those that have more direct customer service focuses, we're going to be working on queuing. We're adding sneeze guards to different offices, making sure that we're able to maintain the six-foot social distancing requirements. So we're preparing for all that. General Services has a lot of work over the next couple of weeks, just to make sure that we're prepared for when we open the doors back up. But we are, whatever that new norm looks like, it's going to include us engaging even further with our citizens, and we need to be prepared for that. And so over the next few weeks, we will be doing all of that. Yesterday began the individual department meetings of looking at what their needs are and planning for all that. And we have a draft plan that, as I mentioned earlier, that we'll be reviewing. So I apologize, I took up so much time with COVID.
No, it's good stuff.
But COVID has been our lives for, really, the past 60 days. And I think we're all excited, just as our residents are, to get back to whatever that new norm is. But I want folks to know that there's been a lot of deliberate planning and that we continue to look out for their safety and the safety of our employees. But we also are very sensitive to people's needs to get back to businesses as norm. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Podolsky, if you don't mind me asking, do you have any updates on DMV Select and the transfer stations or trash dumps?
Yeah. Let me take those in reverse order, if you don't mind. The convenience centers, we have maintained our operations. We are one of the few jurisdictions that has done that. Part of the way we've done that was, is we transitioned some of our Parks and Rec employees and our part-timers to assist at the convenience centers. Even on our peaks, we haven't stopped on the weekends. By transitioning those staff over there, we've been able to maintain full operations. And our partners at CVWMA, who actually pull the containers for us, they've been able to keep up with our demand. And so as of right now, we don't anticipate a reduction in service at the convenience centers. We've been able to maintain. Now, I do thank residents for their patience on the weekends. I've been by, there's sometimes 20 vehicles deep and almost out to Fairgrounds Road here at the central one, but they've been able to move traffic through. People have been very respectful and understanding. So as long as that continues, we think we're going to be able to keep those operations going. DMV services, right now, just, and I can only refer to DMV Select, not the state DMVs, because I don't, I'm not exactly clear when the state will open their DMV services. The services that you would traditionally get at DMV Select, you can still get them today. By calling the commissioner's office, you can call, they will set up either an appointment or meet you in the parking lot. Come get your paperwork, process your registration, and bring it back out to you in the parking lot. I will say, we are one of the few DMV Selects that are even doing that. So one of the challenges that's presenting is the words getting out that Goochlin's still doing that, and we can't be selective. It's, you can't just say, if you don't live in Goochlin, we're not going to do it. So... So folks from other counties are coming out to Goochlin because their DMV Select's not doing it, and the regular DMV offices aren't doing it. And so Jennifer is seeing an uptick. They have been able to keep up with it to date. I think we are a little concerned that if they don't see an opening in the other counties or at the state level, if we try to sustain the services and open the doors full bore, that we could get overwhelmed. And so I think we're hopeful that the state does start opening or easing some of the restrictions. So while we're trying to do the right thing on behalf of our residents, and I commend Jennifer and her team. They're all, they're also seeing an uptick that, that they didn't plan for at the same time. And so I know they're doing their very best, but it is something that we'll continue to monitor, and we have talked to them about how we will manage once the doors are open and have a plan for that as well. And so, but we are worried that if, if we're the only one, that it could really mean an influx that we, that may create some challenges. So we'll see as, as the weeks progress.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I had meant to ask you earlier, but anyway, we're on record now, so that's a good thing. Okay, so the next item of business is requests to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the order presentation. I do have one I'd like to add at the end of our public hearing that begins, session that begins at 6:00 PM. And we did advertise this, is that we will go into a closed session to discuss personnel matters. So we'll add that to, at the end of the public hearing session. Is there anything else, Board? Any other changes? Okay, so we'll have that. Okay, so now will we come to the citizen comment period? We do have the, all the information on how to join the Zoom meeting or either a mobile dial-in number, all the meeting ID numbers, and how to ask a question or make a comment. So Ms. Biskaywicz, do we have anyone?
We do, I believe it's Jonathan.
Hello?
I just heard, it just said I was unmuted, so I guess I'm allowed to talk.
Yes.
This is Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannikin Road, and I do want to appreciate or express my appreciation for the opportunity to participate. I will confess, I missed the budget hearing online last month because I got my Tuesdays and Wednesdays mixed up. I dialed in today at 2:00, but y'all weren't meeting until 5:00, but that gave me a heads up to get in on the 4:00 Finance Committee meeting. And Mr. Peterson, I did not want to trespass on the tight time limit you had there as you were wrapping up, so I opted not to try and comment, and you're welcome for that. I did want to let you folks know that the Monakin Water Conservation District is still operating under the current situation. We've got conservation plans that are under construction. In fact, I will be in the field later this week, early next week, with staff. If the sheriff's still there, he might need to know that there will be a crowd of more than 10 observers on the field, and we're making that check, but he doesn't need to worry because I think most of them are going to be cattle, three, two-legged, and the rest of the observers are going to be cattle. But we do have programs going on. We haven't stopped. We, they have been very kind these last couple of days in offering to assist our Board of Directors in implementing a virtual meeting if needed here in May. As I think you know, our programs are paid for by the farmers, and then we reimburse them. And we've got a number of programs that the farmers have paid to have the work done, but until our Board of Directors meets, we can't reimburse them. So we, we are very anxious in getting a meeting that meets FOA as well as public access and in-person voting procedures, and still are in compliance with the governor's executive orders, number 53 and number 55. But with, with, if the governor doesn't or does open up the Commonwealth before the 18th, we may not need that help, but we appreciate it very, very much. I also noted during the Finance Committee meeting, Ms. Horlock, that most of the departments normally give more than 5% of their budget back. I have voiced an opinion to some of my fellow directors that even though we are an outside agency, that Monakin should give consideration to being part of the budget give-back, if we want to call it that. I cannot speak on behalf of all the directors, but I have not talked to one yet who doesn't feel that we want to be part of the team, and if internally folks are looking to economize on budgets, we'd like to look at somehow returning 5% of the support we get from the county back to you. That's not a done deal. I hope it's not an overcommitment on my part, but we appreciate the support we get from the county, and we'd like to be part of the county's efforts in good times and bad. Mr. Sharp, I heard you comment during the Finance Committee, asking about bank card payments. And if the convenience centers begin to accept agricultural tires, I think I can go on record that our farmers will be happy to pay a recycling fee by bank card and cut down on some of the cash management issues that the convenience centers might be experiencing. I don't know if there's been any update on that, but the agriculture community does have a need to properly recycle agricultural tires, and currently, or at least historically, recent history, we've not been able to do that at the Goochlin Convenience Centers. And now I'm going to take my Monakin hat off and just put Jonathan Lyle, citizen, and listening to some of the comments.
Did you cut him off?
To fine-tide it, but I would encourage the Board to reconsider merit raises for the employees at the county. I think Mr. Peterson has observed that we're only as good as the team that is at bat or on the bench or in the field, or however you want to phrase it. And if there is an opportunity to proceed with the merit raises for employees, I would encourage the Board to look at that. Ms. Biskaywicz, I don't see a light flashing, but I'm going to anticipate, I've come close to three minutes, so thank you guys for showing up. Mr. Spoonhour, I know you're there, I see your hand on occasion, but other than that, thank you guys, and I'll pass with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Do we have any other citizens?
No other citizens. I do have VDOT, we can get to them.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll close the citizen comment period. Next item of, on the agenda is minutes approval. We have four sets of board meetings to approve. I'm assuming everyone has read them. We have a motion.
Yep, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the meetings conducted on March 4th, 10th, 23rd, and 26th of 2020 as presented.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion as second. Any questions about the meeting minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no, disdain, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so our reports, first one is VDOT. Mr. Marshall Nguyen, I understand is on the phone to, to join us by telephone.
Ms. Biskaywicz, I think you unmuted me by mistake.
Oh, hold on, Jonathan, sorry.
All right, Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Badeski, Marshall Nguyen with VDOT, wanted to give you a little rundown on air operations as it stands with VDOT. Air, Air Office in Ashland is closed down. Most everybody in the office is teleworking, except for a couple of people that do not have internet access at home. The area headquarters are working split shifts. Basically, one area headquarters is working 4:10 Monday through Thursday, and the other area headquarters is working 4:10 Tuesday through Friday, so we have coverage for the county. We do plan on going back to norm once COVID-19 is over. We don't know when that's going to be, just like y'all. Want to go into the report a little bit. We did receive 76 work orders this past month. We completed 72. We had several callouts. We had that storm last week in the Rock Castle area where we had, I think, eight or 10 trees down, had a couple of power lines and poles that were broken with the power to, to assist and, and get those roads open. Primary cycle of mowing, we planned on starting that tomorrow, weather permitting. Just want to let y'all know that. A couple of the other items on the list you might be interested in, the pit crossing study, we've got that on hold right now due to the COVID-19 issue we're having with the lack of people showing up. We're going to do that later on so we can get better data. I wanted to bring that to, to y'all's thoughts and information. We, the other projects, the one big project right now is the 288, 250 Signal Project. The contractor's working on Phase 1 right now. Basically, he's working on the southbound off-ramp from 288 southbound. Got some jersey walls up. He's doing some widening and some drainage work in that area right now. As soon as they finish that side, they'll go on the northbound side, which is the east, eastern side of 288, and work on that, that quarter. I think it's four phases in this whole project, but they're basically working on Phase 1 now. The Route 6, Patterson Avenue Turn Lane, Philip Frazier met with the two citizens out there, one on the west side, one on the east side, and we've got right-of入 entries to, to do the work we need to do without going through any right-of-way phase. So that's a good, good thing for us and for y'all, I would say. We plan on starting that project probably this summer, completing it this summer, too. The Fairgrounds, Sandy Hook Road Roundabout is on track for February 2022 advertisement. The 250 522 Roundabout in Louisa's on track for June 2021 advertisement. You probably have seen some scheduled work, which is resurfacing contractors out in the area, prepping roads, probably surface treating roads, that sort of thing in the area. That, that work is ongoing and will be ongoing for the next several weeks. We've given air contractors some leeway with work hours due to, you know, the, the lack of traffic out on the road, so some, some contractors will be working longer, I just want to let you know. Ms. Lascalet, I did get your email about Free Chop.
Yes, sir.
We're looking into that. It's a, it's a statutory 55 through there. Looking at possibly doing a safety study in there. It's a straight, straight roadway where you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
But I, I know it's got some regulatory signs in there. A set right, right where 629 comes in, and there's another set right there near the post office. One side is 35, one side is 25. So more to come on that, that study, and I'll, I'll have to get back with you later on that.
Thank you.
With that, I really don't have anything else. If y'all have any questions, please let me know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Any questions from Board members? Mr. Spoonhour?
Hey, Ms. Nguyen, thank you for the update. This is Neil Spoonhour. I got, been getting quite a few calls about Whitehall Road specifically around where work has previously been done, and it's pretty uneven. I had a guy the other day said, you know, he's, he's not even real comfortable riding his motorcycle on it, so I'm not sure if there's anything that could be done to take a look at that and maybe even it out a little bit. It just kind of looks like a lot of patchwork. But I've gotten three or four calls in the last month about that. And then the second thing I would, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's just Whitehall. Do you know what area, or just run the whole thing, look at the whole thing?
It's, as you get closer down to Haydensville, towards the end of it, where it, it's previous work that has been done, and it just kind of looks like it, it's kind of uneven. I can, I can go out there tomorrow and then send you an email with some more exact times and stuff.
Okay, that's fine.
And then I, potentially something we could talk about as well is with the, with the pandemic, we've, we've sort of seen, and I think with the grass growing, we've seen a little less, I've gotten a little less calls about trash, although I think, I know it's still there. So I'm wondering if, and we typically run into this in past years where when they do the cutting of the grass, that's when it kind of exposes everything that's underneath. So I'm wondering if it's possible to, to get a schedule, realize it'll never be, you know, down to the day, but just a heads up of where they're going to be planning to do maintenance so that we can potentially coordinate groups to go out and say, okay, they're going to be cutting this week, let's plan on doing a litter pickup the following week.
My, my crews were, are scheduled to pick up trash this week prior to mowing starting, and they should be picking up trash throughout the secondaries, but I can certainly, you know, get with you and whoever else on where we are, what areas we're in, and that sort of thing, if you'd like.
That'd be great. I have a lot of citizens that are willing to help as well, so maybe if we coordinate efforts, we can keep Goochlin clean.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thanks so much for everything you guys are doing.
Okay, Mr. Nguyen, stay safe, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much.
The next report is in, in our packet, is introduction, introduction of new county staff. And I guess just would like to go ahead and at least mention the names. So we have William Beetley Jr. has joined the Fire EMS staff as a part-time firefighter April 21st. He's a former volunteer with Goochlin, served as a company captain at Mannikin Company One, and also retired as a career captain EMT after, in an EMT after 35 years of service with the City of Richmond Fire and Emergency Services. We also have another new employer, employee, Robert Wilfong, joined the Department of Building Inspection on April 1st as a combination residential inspector. He comes to us from Top Build Home Services, where he was a field raider and inspector. Robert is a licensed residential and commercial inspector, so welcome to our new staff. We also have in the board packet, the accounts payable report, which you have all seen. No action needs to be taken on that. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Badeski, walk us through that.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just before I jump into the consent agenda, one, just to clarify, the advertised agenda did have the closed session listed at the end. The, what's public, what's published here on the screen does not, we don't, we do not need to formally amend the agenda because it was properly advertised, or should we amend the agenda to add it?
Ms. Lascalet already mentioned it under the item of additions or deletions to the agenda. I think we're covered either way.
Okay, I just didn't know if we needed to take an action just to recognize that that's an amendment or not. Just by consensus is fine?
No, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, no, that's good.
Three actions on the consent agenda for the Board's consideration today. As the Board knows, anytime that there is an action that I, that I administer, it comes back to the Board and then ultimately, consistent with the public hearing notices. The first one is consideration of my recent actions. The first one is abatements for the rents for the Chamber and the Blacksmith. This is the two that, that we've been approached by and have tried to address them, their operations. They're actually not currently actively operating out of those facilities and are impacted by the, the impacts of COVID. And so we, for, for those two particular entities, we have forgotten, and it's just during the period of the emergency. It will, it would be restored and returned as soon as the emergency declaration ends. The second item for the Board's consideration, we had a public hearing on this. The second item for the board's consideration, we had a public hearing on this for Davis Mill Road, the portion that we discussed about abandoning the right-of-way that goes along with that closure. This is something that I think in the work on that abandonment, they had found that there was right-of-way that was captured, and Mr. Kilduff's here, he can explain this a little bit better, that as they were doing their research on this, they found that there was right-of-way that VDOT had held that should have been abandoned. And so this is actually a cleanup to that earlier process. Is that correct? And that comes to us via a resolution for consideration, just as part of that process. And the last one, traditionally, we've adopted May as Older Americans Month, and asked the board to consider doing that once again. Madam Chairman, I, your staff are here, can try to answer any questions as it relates to the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just one, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Spoonhour.
Regarding the rents, when you said, Mr. Bodesky, that that would end when the emergency ends, is that the county declaration of an emergency or the state declaration of an emergency?
It's the county's, Ms. McGee can correct me, but it's the county's declaration.
The county's.
Okay.
Okay, good question. Thank you. Okay. So if there are no further questions, then we have motion to approve the consent agenda. We take them as block, I assume.
Madam Chairman, move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion passes. Consent items are, agenda items are approved. Okay. So the next item is new business. We have the third quarter general fund projection and budget amendments. Ms. Horlacher, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Oh, I'm going to get my presentation. Wait a minute. Just a second. Okay. Sorry, I have the audit. Is it open? No, because I have an audit first. So there you go. Okay. Sorry. That's okay. Okay. Okay, I'm here this evening to present to you the 2020 year-end projections and also to request we amend the budget for a few items. Last month, I also provided an update on how we might end the year, and I promised you I'd come back every month and present again, just so we can keep you up to date with what is going on. So in terms of revenues, I haven't really changed any of my projections yet for things like real estate and personal property, since we're just too far away from the collection date to know how those are going to go. Same with sales tax. Now, with building permits, we projected initially where we were at that point, which was 882,000, and we have collected in excess of that. We're already up to 921,000. So we're still collecting building permits. Interest on bank deposits, I haven't changed that projection, although I'll point out we are at 700, almost 760,000, and that budget, that projection was 800. So chances are, we may go for that as well. Some of the state funds, I have not changed that projection. And then the last item, all other revenues. So at the point that I did that projection, I assumed no other collections, which was very conservative. And we have collected other funds in the meantime, and we are continuing to collect things like delinquent taxes and other fees. So what the result is, is last month, my forecast was 55.9 million, almost 56. We're now up to a projection of about 56.3 million. So we've seen things get better in the past month in terms of the projection, increasing the revenues by about 300,000 over what I was projecting last month. In terms of expenditures, we made some adjustments because we wanted to make sure we didn't end up with an operating deficit. We asked all departments except Public Safety and General Services to turn back a minimum of 5%. Schools, 150,000. And so right now, my review that I did at the end of April for the end of the year is that the turnback will probably be greater than that. And so, and even within Public Safety, it looks like both the Fire and Sheriff's Department will probably turn back some funds. So between the increase in revenue and the decrease in expenses, that gives us about a surplus of about 500,000 at this point in the year. So we are still looking, we are looking very positive at this point compared to last month. And it also gives us the opportunity to think about, are there some one-time things that we didn't put into the FY21 budget that maybe we will be able to do with the end-of-the-year surplus money? And we discussed these at the Audit Committee, and I agreed and said I would come back in August when we normally look at these things. But there is the potential that some of those savings that the Sheriff Department and Fire Department had, and also the schools, could then be assigned and used again in FY21 budget. So that's very positive news for them and for us, for the county as a whole. And I will bring that projection back again next month. And of course, we're keeping within our policies and doing well there. In terms of what we are, so June and July, we'll continue with the 20 projections, and then in August, we'll meet with the Audit Committee first and then this board to discuss the end-of-the-year, any surpluses and anything we may want to reinstate or assign to the FY21 year. In terms of amendments and transfers, we received approximately $23,000 in relief funds from the CARES Act. And this money was a result of the fact that we make claims to Medicaid as a result of billing for our, the company, our third party that bills for, sometimes bills Medicaid patients. So anybody who had made claims Medicaid-wise got a proportionate amount of some funds. We didn't apply for it. We received it. In fact, they just deposited in our bank account that we deposit our cost recovery funds from. There's our stipulations as to what we can spend it on. And consulting with the Fire Department, we believe that we can back this, these, this 23,000 up with expenditures. And you can also use it to recover lost revenues. And our cost recovery calls have been way down compared to normal, compared to average. And our third-party collector, they keep statistics on all these things. So we think that we would be able to utilize the 23,000 between that and then some overtime costs that have been incurred as well. And these would be things that, at the same time, would not be reimbursable by FEMA, because of course you can't double-dip on things. And we're trying to keep, you know, to utilize this for funds that we knew we wouldn't be able to get back from FEMA anyway. So the Fire Chief does believe we can utilize those funds within the Fire budget. So part of today's actions would be to accept and appropriate that 23,000. Also, we would like, we have a separate courthouse maintenance fund where we collect the fees that are collected towards, you know, through the courts, towards courthouse maintenance. We would like to appropriate 14,000 of those funds towards some ballistic glass installation around the judge's desk and also at the Circuit Court, Circuit Court Office, the clerk of the Circuit Court's office. Also, we have collected about 25,000 more in rental funds than we had budgeted this year. We initially started out this year's budget not realizing we were going to start renting out various different spaces. So there's about 25,000 in rental funds collected, and we would like to appropriate those funds and use them for costs in the general services and grounds management, because they've had incurred higher costs because of having, taking on some of these properties. And the last request is to transfer 50,000 from the Reserve for Contingency to the 911 Technology Budget that is separate from the 911 dispatcher budget. We had a charge from Verizon for one-time long-distance true-up charge that we weren't expecting, and that was approximately $13,000. And then we also had a maintenance contract for the new switch that we installed that we should have been anticipating, but we didn't budget for it, because last year was the first year, and wasn't included because of the new year, the first year, there is no charge for maintenance. So that is what is causing the overage in that department. And at this point, I'm open to questions about any of these actions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Horlacher. Mr. Peterson.
Madam Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Horlacher, for that update. The Fire EMS item, it brought to mind, they've been doing a fair amount of transportation from the woman's farm. We've been getting cost recovery on that transportation.
And that is something I can't answer. I'll have to get back to you on that.
John, do you have anything on that? Chairman, Chairwoman, excuse me, and Chief, and I have been engaged on some discussions with the women's prison. In fact, they can do some billing with those transports. We actually are trying to get out of the business of doing those transports, and we've had a very productive meeting facilitated by Lee Ware and team to meet with them, and they're actually bringing in a third party to actually do the majority of those transports. And so while there was some revenue recovery, we were more concerned not only about recovering when we could, but the decontamination processes that we had to go through for all of the centralized cases. And so they've actually hired out a third party, and I believe that's already in effect as we speak. But I believe there was some ability. It's a little more difficult trying to do that third-party billing for obvious reasons, but I do believe that they were eligible to do that, most of which were through Medicaid recoveries, is my understanding from the chief.
Okay. Thank you for that. Part of my reason for the question, if there is a shortfall in our recovery, and it is COVID-related, would it be eligible for any of these other programs? That's kind of part of where I was going with that. It's something to keep in mind and keep track of those expenses, and if there is a funding opportunity that covers shortfalls related to COVID expenses, this might be one of those.
Right.
So thank you for that. The second thing, Madam Chairman, is that these four items, budget amendments, were considered by the Finance and Audit Committee earlier today, and these come with the recommendation for approval from the committee. Thank you for that.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Lumpkins?
Thank you. Always enjoy getting the updates. The EMS technology, 50,000, it sounded like 37,000 of that was for the switch maintenance?
Yes.
Did you pick that up in the 21 budget?
Yes.
Who's department? What department?
That actually belongs to, he's not here, but it's an IT department. So Randy actually...
That's in the IT budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Like Mr. Lumpkins, I like to get any updates. I like this update much more than the last few that you've enabled given. I'm sure there's nobody in the county happier to be able to give good news to you. Thank you for that. I just wanted to get some clarification on the turnbacks. You made the comment in your presentation that a lot of areas will be turning back more than the 5%. And just to clarify, that's because of normal operating turnback procedures, not because of what we asked them to do with COVID. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, normally, but departments turn back a percentage of their budget. Very few departments, except when unexpected things happen actually, or unexpected burdens, actually usually spend their full budget. I had noticed in going my reviews that some budgets are doing really well, and I have a feeling that's because we haven't, the travel has really, so we haven't had the conferences, and usually there's a, you know, a...
Component.
A set of spring conferences that go on, and quite a few of our personnel go to those. And so there's, I think, you know, with the way things have been this year, I think they'll actually turn back more.
And I wanted to point that out because I think it's a testament to the folks we have working in these departments that they're using good fiscal responsibility. It could have went the other way, where they're looking for more, but instead, doing, making the right decisions, difficult decisions, to be able to have that, I just think is phenomenal, and I just really appreciate that.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So board, we need a motion.
Madam Chairman, move that we approve the appropriation of 14,000 in courthouse maintenance funds as presented, the appropriation of 25,000 in rental receipts to the general services and grounds maintenance budgets, that we accept and appropriate the 23,118 of CARES Act relief funds and put that appropriate to the Fire EMS budget. And lastly, that we approve the transfer of 50,000 from the Reserve for Contingency to the EMS technology budget for the true-up charge and maintenance contracts as presented.
Okay. We have a motion. Any second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Horlacher. The last item in this session is appointments. Mr. Bodesky, did you want to do this one, or do you want me to?
I'm glad to. You have two appointments for your consideration tonight. First, for the Pamunkey Regional Library Board, Barbara Young from July 1, 2020, for a term ending June 30, 2024. And for the Plan RVA Technical Advisory Committee, often referred to as the Tech, Todd Kilduff would be recommended to serve as the alternate member, replacing Debbie Byrne.
So any questions, comments? We have a motion to approve.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointments.
Okay. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Third?
Okay. All right. I think I know how this vote's going to go. So no further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, motion passes. Okay. So we're running a little late, our five o'clock session. We're supposed to start at 6:00. Board, do you just want to roll on with it, or do you want to take a quick break, or what's your pleasure? Roll? All right. Good with me. Okay. All right. So we've completed the five o'clock session. Now we began the public hearings. So call to order the 6:00 PM public hearing, which is actually 6:14 PM. Sorry about that.
Madam Chairman, just to be clear, the agenda called for a citizen comment period. You have already had one, so you're not any, by any stretch obligated to have one now, but I want to check with you before we rolled into public hearings if you wanted to have another one.
Do we have someone on the line, Ms. Kewitz?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, that makes that simple. Okay, so...
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have anyone on the line. We've already had a citizen comment period, so we will skip that. All right. So thank you for that. Okay. So Ms. McGee, I believe you are going to present these items. We have three of them.
I am. They are public hearings, so we will...
They are public hearings, so we will take a moment to ask for any comments from the public. In fact, we're, all three of these ordinances have already been before you, and they were adopted on an emergency basis. Under the law, the emergency basis actually had nothing to do with the fact that we had a state of emergency. It had to do with the fact that these were adopted without public notice, without publication of the ordinances. Now, the reason Goochlin County did that is because we would only do such a thing in the state of emergency and to handle things that needed to be handled because of the state of emergency. In any event, I'm going to go ahead and start with the first one. Because of the state of emergency, we did put before you, I drafted and put before you, an ordinance that was developed specifically for things a little differently during the state of emergency in order to allow Goochlin County's government to continue its operations, but also to adapt to the situation with the public health crisis with COVID-19. And so in that ordinance, we adopted the opportunity to have a meeting such as we're having tonight, where the public is not physically present, but that they are listening and have the opportunity to speak during public hearings and citizen comment periods. We expanded that not only for the Board of Supervisors, but for other boards that operate in the county, either appointed by you or for which you make a recommendation of appointment. In addition, we acknowledged that the county administrator, as the Director of Emergency Management, was empowered to determine who could come into this building as a public facility, and that it's close to the public at the moment, because we wanted to make sure our citizens were aware that that was always within his power. And then we set out the other powers of the Director of Emergency Management. Again, those already exist, but the public wouldn't necessarily be aware of them. We wanted everybody to be able to look at this ordinance and find out what could happen and what could happen differently because of the emergency. We then suspended any deadlines, timeframes, or procedures, while Goochlin County staff and this board has continued to work to meet any deadline or timeframe that it needed to. We needed the flexibility in case, again, a month ago, nobody had any idea whether we would all be out sick, perhaps hospitalized. So that is a part of your continuity ordinance. And tucked in there under the emergency management one is also something that's come before you each month, and that is the county administrator's authority as a Director of Emergency Management to make some changes to how the county operates in between your board meetings, to be able to respond in a direct way to the needs of the citizens, the staff, and the businesses in Goochlin County. But as you have seen, those actions have then all come before you for consideration of ratification and extension of those, so that, you know, while the county administrator has the opportunity to react quickly and respond quickly to needs, you, the board, and the citizens are notified about what's happened, and those can be continued if the board authorizes them. So that is the first ordinance before you tonight. It was originally adopted on March 26 at a meeting, a public meeting of the Board of Supervisors, but that was also an emergency meeting. And it's before you tonight for readoption to allow it to continue. By law, this ordinance cannot continue for more than six months after the end of the emergency. I would just say to the board members that it's being adopted today and that we will ask you to rescind it at the appropriate time.
Any questions for Ms. McGee regarding this readoption?
One quickly.
Ms. Lumpkins.
And I'm sorry I missed this, or if we talked about it and it slipped my mind, I apologize, but I noticed it's an uncodified ordinance, and that made me think, where do citizens find it? But you also, in your presentation, said something to the effect that, you know, folks will see what's going on. So where do you find this while it's in effect? Where does somebody find this while it's in effect? Is it going to get added to our regular ordinances?
No, we don't intend to send it to MuniCode and have it published, which is typically a three-month process. However, it should be available on the website, and it has been publicly advertised as part of the board minutes, both from the March 26 meeting and today. But it should be on the website. If it's not already, we'll make sure that it is.
Got you. So uncodified sort of means just that it's not going to end up in MuniCode, it's not going to get a placeholder in our code.
That's right. It doesn't have a number that associated within the numbering session of our code. It's not in MuniCode. To be fair, every zoning case is also an uncodified ordinance amendment.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Okay, so we will open the public hearing on this. Ms. Kewitz, do we have anyone on the line?
Yes, we do. I believe it's John.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, John Talow, 1521 Mannequin Road. Let me just share some technology feedback, no pun intended, but when Ms. McGee was presenting, if you are on the telephone, dial in, it was virtually in and out in maybe every third word. And if you listen via live stream, there's about a 10-second delay, which, this last calllet is why you didn't get any public comment at the beginning of this meeting. I was too late. But I really appreciate that there was an emergency environment with this ordinance. I like the idea of us not having some of this, I will call it government thinking for individual ordinances in place. I like the idea of people utilizing their own thought process as to how they keep themselves safe without endangering others. So if there's an opportunity to rescind the emergency environment here in Goochlin, I would certainly be in favor of that. If I'm not speaking to the exact proposal in front of it, I defer to my earlier comment that it was really, really hard to follow what Ms. McGee was presenting with the phoning connection. I don't know as if the sheriff did, she would be able to present from the lectern or not, but the audio on the phone is really hard for those of us at home who are dialing in. Those are my comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Talow. Appreciate it. Do we have any other citizens on the line?
Madam Chair, why don't I, again, perhaps slightly briefly, but why don't I go ahead and make the presentation again from the podium?
Sure.
I just, I just want to go ahead and be brief, but this is something that we did in an emergency basis on March 26. And while there's somewhat less communication, someone couldn't drop by the county administrator's office to pick this up, it just makes sense to go ahead and go through it. What is back before you tonight for readoption before the County Board of Supervisors is called a continuity of government ordinance. It was proposed to you, I drafted it and put it before you, on March 26 at a public meeting. It is designed, because of the state of emergency, to provide us sufficient powers or changes to our powers to allow county government to respond to the state of emergency and to continue its operations to serve the Board of Supervisors and the citizens. And to make, just briefly, the things covered in, the continuity of government ordinance include that the public meetings are now able to be held without citizens in the room because we have provided not only access, but the opportunity to comment through technology with the live stream and the Zoom features. That ordinance not only covers the Board of Supervisors, but other boards of the county that are either appointed by the board or for whom you make a recommendation. The next thing covered is an acknowledgement that the county administrator, as your Director of Emergency Management, is empowered to make restrictions on who can come into county facilities, including this building, to the extent necessary to protect both the health of the public and citizens and staff. That is action that he has taken, and this acknowledges that he has the authority to do that. There are other powers of the Director of Emergency Management, which is our county administrator, including changing procedures, to be able to make spending from unobligated funds. The one that has come before this board several times now is we crafted the opportunity for the county administrator to take actions to change county processes or procedures, to be able to respond to the needs of citizens or businesses and staff, and that those actions, although they can be effective immediately, then come before your board at the regular meetings for consideration by you, ratification and extension of them from his being taken. And we've done that at two meetings now, the county administrator able to assist citizens and businesses quickly, but back before the board for your information and for all citizens to be aware. And then finally, although all county staff is working diligently, perhaps in different ways, but working diligently every day to meet all of their responsibilities and duties, we did include a section which allows a suspension of deadlines and timeframes in case a situation did occur where so many folks were out or unavailable to act that we did not meet deadlines or timeframes. So that's a summary of, again, of the continuity of government action that was adopted by this board on an emergency basis, March 26, has now been fully advertised and noticed for this public hearing. It is legally not able to extend beyond six months after the emergency. However, it will be back before this board to rescind at the appropriate time that it's felt that none of these procedures are needed. And although uncodified, it should be available to the public both on the county website, also could be available requested from the county administrator or the county attorney's office. So I know we've already had one citizen speak, but at least I wanted to summarize again for the public.
So the public hearing is still open? Do we have any other citizens' comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll close this public hearing on this item. Do we have a motion, or any other questions, I should say? Okay. Do we have a motion to readopt the emergency ordinance?
Madam Chairman, I will move that we readopt the ordinance to allow the continuity of government operations as presented.
Okay, thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further comments, I believe this would be a roll call. Vote, Mr. Badeski.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Spooner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Lachale?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Okay, so Ms. McGee, we've got another readopting ordinance.
I'll just do it once this time, but right into the microphone. Next, before the board members is, and for public hearing, is to consider readoption of an ordinance that came before you, in this case, on April 7, at your regular board meeting. It is to delay the real estate and personal property taxes, to delay interest and penalty on those. As the board knows, real estate and personal property taxes are due on June 5. We do know that there are many citizens of Goochlin County that are having some financial repercussions from the emergency and from the governor's orders that have shut things, businesses down, or unemployment and so forth. We are taking the action as available to the county to set at zero, in essence, or delay the imposition of interest. It's set at zero for June 5, or starting June 6, until a month later on July 5. And to give our citizens a little bit more time to try and pay the real estate and personal property taxes. The county treasurer has also tried to convey to the citizens to please contact her if citizens need payment plans or assistance in trying to make their payments. And so this allows the income that should come in from citizens, even within this more extended timeframe, to still be able to be collected and applied to your current fiscal year, but give citizens some additional time without any penalty or interest. If adopted, this ordinance amendment would be effective from the date of its original adoption on April 7. It would continue from then. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? I do have one, Ms. McGee, just, it's a tiny little thing. But July 5 is a Sunday, so would this extend till Monday? If it's received on Monday, or is that 30 days and that's it?
No, we already allow pursuant to the way our code is written that a payment that is, that anything that falls on a Saturday or Sunday goes to the following workday.
Okay, so technically, they could come in on Monday, the 6th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just a little minor detail. Any other questions? All right, so we'll open the public hearing on this. Ms. Kewitz?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, Mr. Talow?
Okey-dokey.
Ms. McGee, thank you very much for addressing from the lectern. I got every single word and I meant to keep it clear, rather. We're not at all germane, but leave that as it may. I appreciate very much the board considering this. I received my notice of reassessment, but I have not yet received my first-half invoice for my real estate, personal property.
It's coming.
So I know in the past, the treasurer's office has said they like to give folks at least 30 days to pay. Well, I'm fortunate in not having situated payment beyond June 5. I think that for those folks who have not yet either received their first-half bill or may have a scenario, will appreciate benefit from the make. So I hope that you will vote favorably on the matter before you. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Talow. Ms. Kewitz, do we have any other?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we will close the public hearing on this item. If there are no other questions, could we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we readopt the ordinance to delay penalty and interest for 30 days on real estate and personal property taxes due June 5, 2020, till July 5, 2020.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Badeski.
Mr. Spooner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Lachale?
Yes. Okay, so you're on a roll here. One more, Ms. McGee.
Yes. The last item before the board and for public hearing this evening is readopting an ordinance to amend the County Code Section 13285, which relates to the Bridgewater Road Service District. As the board members well know, we had hoped to have the Bridgewater roads completed, accepted by VDOT, before the end of last year, and that has unfortunately not happened. What is before you today is a minor amendment to make sure that no of those service district taxes are imposed on the residents in the service district until January 1 of 2021, because you didn't want to tax the residents before they've got the benefit of the road. It came before you on an emergency basis so that it could, the tax bills could be prepared appropriately, which means in this case, this tax not added. But it is before you tonight for adoption. This is a codified amendment. It is a change to the code. If there are any questions?
Okay, Ms. Spooner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If memory serves, that even though we're increasing the tax rate, the citizens do have the ability, if they want to make the payment in one lump sum. Are they able to still do that if they would like to? Have they been, do they know what that sum is?
I would say that they, it's not listed in the ordinance what that sum is, and I can't speak for the treasurer's ability to credit a payment against a debt that does not yet exist. As of today, there is no debt to pay because the taxes have not incurred. By the time January 1 of next year comes up, we do intend to have a lump sum amount in the ordinance, and staff's already worked on that revision to the ordinance so that each property would know a lump sum amount to pay. We didn't think it would be fair to bring that before you on an We didn't think it would be fair to bring that before you on an emergency basis, so that's scheduled to come back before you in what I hope is one timeframe, which is several months from now, when the roads are done.
Fair enough. So that's really the lump, so this, I was wondering if somebody was maybe putting their house on the market, and they didn't want them to have this hanging over the new buyers' heads, if they could pay it off, but that wouldn't, this situation would not impact that at all?
No.
Because the roads aren't done.
The roads aren't done. There is no tax yet to pay.
Madam Chairman, if I could just add, the amount that was, the residents were made aware of the amount that was associated with their property, and that amount has not changed. The, in fact, the ordinances sort of kept their obligation earlier on, so they're aware of the amounts. It just, unfortunately, until we establish the initial bill, there's nothing to pay against. And so that amount hasn't changed. I just want to make sure, everything we told the residents as we're sitting here is consistent. It just, this just delays that billing until we've met our obligation.
That makes sense, right. In that scenario, someone could ask for the amount. They know the amount if they so choose to do that, so. At any rate, any other questions? Okay, so let's see. We've had the public hearing? No, we have not.
We have not, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. Ms. Biskaywitz?
Yes, we have Jonathan Lyle.
Okay.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannakin Road, minor amendment, so I give minor support to making this change. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Do we have any other citizens comment, to comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. So seeing no others, I'll close the public hearing on this item. And so do we have a motion, please?
Yes, Team Sharp and Lumpkins will handle this.
Excuse me?
Not the cool end, just the cool end.
Madam Chair, I move that we readopt ordinance to amend the Goochlin County Code, Section 13-285, Bridgewater Road Service District, to delay the imposition of the service district tax from 2020 to 2021.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Badeski?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Spooner?
Yes.
Ms. Lashale?
Yes. Okay, three out of three there, Ms. McGee. Okay, so now we come to the last item that was advertised that we added, which is the closed session. Do we have someone to read the motion to go into closed session? Mr. Lumpkins, thank you.
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code, Sections 2.23711 and 2.23712, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting for the purpose of discussing recruitment for the position of county administrator.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Spooner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Lashale?
Yes. Okay, so we will go into closed session for this purpose, and when we return, we'll let you know so we can close out the meeting. Thank you very much.
Lumpkins, please.
There we go. All right, so Mr. Lumpkins, would you read the certification for the closed session?
Pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23712, Paragraph D, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board in the closed meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lumpins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Badeski, roll call, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Spooner?
Yes.
Ms. Lashale?
Yes. Okay, any other further business coming through the board? Okay, therefore, we will adjourn until our regular meeting on June 2 at 2:00 PM. Thank you, gentlemen.